It was easy to build because there was a lot of interest in it. So I just want to say thank you to all those people who helped kind of behind the scenes make this happen. But let's really talk about what we're really here for, to celebrate these guys here. You know, we, we, this whole year, I've been so impressed by these gentlemen here. Just not only just in the beginning of the process when we're, you know, building this program as we're flying and kind of things. They gel so quickly and just work with other teams and work with the JV team and practice with them. The camaraderie, it blew my mind. Some of them I didn't even see their faces until about two weeks ago, just because of them learning and just, you know, just having them in class and stuff. But they all, and some of them I found out that they didn't actually know each other, even if they hadn't met each other, but the camaraderie they had built so fast, I was so impressed. And as the season went on, I was still impressed on how much they challenged each other. They always pushed each other to be stronger, to be better at the game, you know, be more competitive. But at the same time, I was also extremely impressed in how supportive they were for each other. They constantly were trying to pick up each other. Someone felt kind of bad maybe they felt like they let the team down. They wouldn't let them do that. They let them, they made sure that they felt like they were a valuable part of the team. And that's really what we're doing, whether we're doing traditional athletics or esports, that's really what it's about, right? It's just about building that team and making those connections and just getting better people. So I feel extremely proud that I got to be a part of that process. So thank you gentlemen very much for that. So I just want to recognize them individually, just so that they can get their moment that they've earned by playing so hard. And quite an epic match, if you want to watch it on Esports, Esports Ohio. It was, to the very end, Jerome put up quite the fight and it was in overtime, basically a buzzer beater at the end to win it all. It was quite, it was quite impressive. We were all shouting and breaking our mics afterwards. So first, our captain, Vikram Cannon.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Sam Baker. Elijah Cranston. And then Jacob Cranston. I'm so proud of these guys. And we're really looking forward to next fall to come back here and announce our next championships.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Jamie Stewart from Jerome High School, and I have the honor of introducing Jason Sater. I echo what Mike says about being a great teacher, although he's not a teacher at Jerome, he's at Sciota. But when you hear across the district somebody's name, and not just from his wife bragging about him at Jerome, you know you're meeting a really good person. So I was super excited to hear that Jason was going to be our coach. And I'm also super excited for him that he was the first Sater to win a state championship. So I'd like to introduce Jason Sater.
Thank you, Jamie. And again, just like Jonathan said, I'd like to thank superintendent, board, Kristi Vinnie, and Lyndy Schweitzer for really doing a lot of footwork to get this off the ground. When we first started this, we did a little bit of training with Esports Ohio. And in the pandemic, one of the problems was there's a lot of teams that would forfeit. So I went into this really telling my kids, my goal is to have no forfeits this year. I wasn't quite sure of the level of players we would have. I just wanted to show up for every game and to kind of say, the goal was no forfeits and to have state champs and state runners-up, it just blew me away. I'm just real, Jonathan said a lot of things that are true for my team, too. Just really, really proud of how they came together, gelled. We had a lot of leaders come out and just really helped me learn these games. Now, I've been a nerd my whole life, you can probably tell just by looking at me. And I just really fell in with these kids, even though I didn't get to meet them in person until tonight because of being at Sciota and Mary Jerome and many were remote. But so much growth, so much excitement, and to just walk away from that blew me away. Now, Jamie said something about my wife, so I'll just talk about that really quick and then we'll recognize these kids. Why don't you guys come up behind me? My wife has coached for years and years and, you know, and, you know, I didn't really understand what the passion was about because this is my first year coaching something competitive. And she's been chasing a state championship for 20 years and I got one on my first try. But, but I will say, it's not, I had very little to do with it. These guys behind me know the game way better than I do. So many of them were teaching me, embarrassingly, what they were probably like, come on, everybody knows that. But I had to learn this stuff and I'm still not done. So thanks, guys, for teaching me. I'm going to stop rambling and recognize our runners-up, which are our Valorant team. So guys, just come over and get these when I call you up. Luke Mann, amen. And this, this is the game where we play Kaufman. It was right down to the end. It's a three-game series and the third series went into overtime. Tyler Brooke. Alan Chen. No. A lot of my players head to work or have vacations and things like that. Aiden Green. No. Still want to recognize you. Nathan Young. And Ben Halt. And Benjamin McPhee. No. I'm a little slow on that because he goes by Benji. And Calvin Park. All right. Not many of our Valorant players could make it, but here's my state champion League of Legends team. All right. Ethan Chung. Chung Mellow online. I love his online name. Frank Lee. There you go, Frank. Frank is Fat Microwave online. Tyler Ling.
Apple.
Apple, he's Apple. And he's our captain, did a wonderful job.
Hello, this is Peter. I'm honored to be your athletic director for Dublin Jerome High School.
We even scout the other teams, so.
I'm here to introduce our very first track state champion.
Belaji Radakrishnan, man. You were just Belaji online.
And to do so, I have head coach Randy Beadie and assistant coach, hurdler coach, Beth
No.
Irsham.
Helsa, that's right.
We are here to recognize Silas K. Yuma, who won the 110 hurdles at the state track
And that's Tony Ruff, she goes by Seppi online. I know their online names better than their. And Andrew, did Andrew, there he is.
and field meet this year.
Andrew really helped me early in the beginning really understand the game and I really appreciate
Silas was a dedicated team member for our Dublin Jerome track and field team for all four years of his high school career.
that, Andrew. Let's give these guys a round of applause.
He came out as a freshman, ready to give hurdling a shot, but unfortunately hurt his back and wasn't able to complete the year. Never one to be deterred, he came back sophomore year, ready to try again. However, he was battling back from not only his back injury, but also a foot injury that year. Silas is nothing if not determined, and he refused to let his injuries hold him back. While he lost his junior year to quarantine, he used his perseverance to come out on top his senior year. When we started our season this year, Silas made it clear that he was ready to not only be the best runner he could be, but also to be the leader of our team. He started the season both feet in, running, if you will, and ended in the same fashion by showing up and always giving 110% to all of the practices and meets. Silas is talented and tough. He never gives up and his season proved that fact. He is our current record holder for the 110 hurdles with a time of 14.32. He placed third in both our district and regional meet, and obviously placed first in the state meet, making him our first track and field state champ in Dublin Jerome history. His stats are impressive, but what we love most about Silas is his character and who he is as a team member. In the past four years, no matter what injury or setback he faced, he showed up to work with his teammates, be coached, and try to get better regardless. He was always there to cheer his teammates on and led every practice by example. We will not only remember his accomplishments as a runner, but his leadership, dedication, and hardworking spirit, most of all. Congratulations, Silas, on all your hard work and all you've accomplished. Congratulations on the season and congratulations on being the D1 state champion in the 110 hurdles for the 2021 track and field season. We are all so proud of you.
time?
I, thank you, I do have something that I want to bring up. I represent Congressional District 12, which is Troy Walderson's district with National School Awards Association. We go to Washington DC to advocate for public education every year. This year, last week, we did it via Zoom, which was not that great, but hey, we still got the point, we still learned a lot. But the topics we discussed were building the teacher pipeline, Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, the IDEA, which we do every year and we're still coming back, but I think there might be some of it on that this year, we'll see. I believe we'll see it. Building stronger school infrastructure, the homework app and the education digital divide, and funding for public schools and funding and resources. And these may sound like boring topics, but actually they're near and dear to all of our hearts because we're in it for public education. And public education is, seems to be a political volleyball right now, which I'm not really happy about, but hey, we deal with it and we make the best of it. So if anyone has anything they need to have brought up, let me know. Anybody else? Dr. Marshausen?
Just a couple of things quickly. We will be putting together a new organizational chart as there have been several new positions added and some shifts here at central office in our district-level administrators. And along with that, and you can see that chart coming up here, along with that, we will be sharing a Hoota Call page that we will put up for parents on our website so that parents know if there is a concern or area that they have, be it teacher or athletics or transportation or curriculum, that those numbers and Hoota Call in the district will be readily available for them. And we also want everyone to know the roles of those folks, so this will also be published and shared on our website with the new organizational chart. So this is in the packet, so that information will be available. One of the things that we will be asking for your approval on tonight is the shift of Mr. Allring as our new Director of Building Leadership. As he comes to central office, and we're excited to have Mike here at central office, he'll be a great addition to our team. We are also, and he's been asked this question several times, if there is a change in Dr. Holdley's position here with that Director of Strategic Planning, we are well positioned to absorb that position. And with the changes we've made, we're in a strong place that we will be able to have those duties reassigned throughout our organization moving forward. We have a board mini-retreat scheduled for the 29th, and in that mini-retreat, we will be working on our culture handbook and looking at having Mr. Tim Kite come and share some of his work around building the culture that we would like here in the Dublin City Schools. In the future, we've spoken about having Ms. Denise Hamilton, Dr. Hamilton, come to one of our board meetings to share the training and the work that she will be doing with our administrators and teachers, where we look at our commitment to excellence and equity here in the Dublin City Schools. And then finally, we will be asking for a second reading approval of newly revised policies that are on the agenda for tonight. We would like to thank the Policy Committee for their work. This is a pretty hefty lift with new policies and it's been several months since we've gone through that, and this will catch us up to where we are with those policies.
It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the attached new and revised policies. Do we have a motion?
I move, I move to adoptance.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have the first reading of the policies. How do you approve the new charter policies? I was sharing the organizational charts as an informational piece on all of the different positions that have been approved by the board and where those approved positions will fit in terms of how we're going to operate here in central office.
I already took a break this first. Mr. Weininger.
Yes.
Mrs. May and Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Three to zero.
Yes, this evening, we got a few things on the agenda from the treasurer's office. We do have the purpose classes, we have the new Russell Run Principals Fund, and the Sciota class of 2025. So graduate one and we start another as the freshman class goes in. We do have some appropriation changes this evening to match up most of our grants and allocations. Just a reminder, we do have our year-end kind of fiscal approvals, statutory stuff, coming after the retreat on June 29th, will be at the board meetings that we have to file prior to June 30th to close out fiscal year '21 and then as we move into fiscal year '22, which starts July 1st. So just a reminder of that. Approval of the May financial report, just want to reflect, we are online with estimates for revenues and expenditures, that this does reflect to our updated five-year forecast that was recently approved by the board. And then finally, we have one donation on this evening for some books that were donated to elementary school buildings throughout this day. So any questions on anything on the agenda?
I have a question about the books. Did they go through the gauntlet?
Yeah, most of the books are already in our collection and any of the new ones will be reviewed by the librarians and the staff before they are put into position for our students to go through the gauntlet.
Appreciate it.
One other thing, too, the Senate passed out the budget bill last week. The House did not concur, so they are in conference committee with that, so we'll continue to monitor that as that goes along in the process. So just to keep that in mind on that. That's all I have this evening.
It is the treasurer's recommendation to approve items 6B, C, D, E. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
Call them, please.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
And Mrs. May.
Yes, motion passes three to zero. Ready for me?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Just a few items for you this evening for your approval. Before I start into those, though, you'll see that Ms. Jennifer Schwanke is at the table with us this evening. I'd like to welcome Jen officially as our new deputy superintendent. She will be covering the next board meeting and then hopefully many, many years of board meetings beyond that. For those of you who know Jen, you know that she's charismatic and she's energetic and she is a very gifted leader who listens and learns before she makes decisions. She will serve our community well. She has served Scottish Corners, Carr Middle School, Indian Run, where you even at Sells. She has served each of those buildings through her empathy and her kind spirit, and I just cannot wait to watch her from Georgia, just absolutely hit it out of the park and serve our children and our staff and our community. So welcome, Jen. The items for your approval tonight, this is your second reading of the 22, 23 school calendar and also the student handbook for next year. There are no revisions from the first reading on the student handbook. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Can you come back and visit us tomorrow?
Not in the winter, but yes, in the summer. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve items 8A and 8B?
So move.
Are there any questions?
Comment, just a comment. I'd like to thank Dr. Deagle for her service throughout her entire career here in Dublin. She has done a fabulous job and we appreciate everything and wish you only the best as you move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
I have to drop off that one and say, and we are very sorry to see you go.
And that's why I kept saying.
It's been a wonderful community to raise our son, and so thank you so much for providing that level of education that will serve him well. Appreciate it.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And Mrs. May.
Yes, motion passes three to zero, please. Mr. Stark?
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple items for approval tonight. The first one is an easement that Delco Water Company is asking. The district owns a small parcel of land, three acres up in Jerome Village. We have a 99-year lease on it, so we don't really use the land. It's a park right now called Ryan Murphy Park by Brock Road and Jerome. And this is just an easement for some water work. We've done the legal work on it, we don't see anything that would cause any issues with that. The second item is, as part of our, as our last summer bid for our PI projects, our permanent improvement projects, is to replace three boilers at Kaufman with two more efficient boilers, and we're recommending that CD Whitfield Company, we awarded a contract worth $224,388. They were the lowest responsible bid, and we're looking to get that approved, and we'll start on that this summer. Is there any questions?
Mr. Stark, could you share how we analyze the numbers for all of those purchases that are large like that? Just a basic understanding?
Absolutely. So these are, some of these products, we do get quite complex, actually all of them over $50,000 do. So what we do is earlier in the year, I'll come to the board after we do a request for qualifications, which is a competitive way to pick engineers or architects or designers to help us build the specifications. And the reason we want to build the specifications is not only to make it the most energy-efficient, efficient, you know, boiler or roof or asphalting project as we can, but also by building such tight specifications that when we publicly bid it, we can get apples-to-apples bid. And we do bid everything that's capital, any type of improvement or addition to a school, we'll get publicly bid. And I'm proud to say that while you can do some state term pricing, which we would do in an emergency, I'm proud to say that over the last five years, we have publicly bid everything. So everything has been competitively bid, we only picked the lowest responsible bidder. And because we get, we have a large stable of designers and engineers who try to get them niche for what their product is, we have, we've had some really competitive bids and we've done some good work over the last five years with that.
I know as a board, we appreciate all the checks and balances that are in there and of course with our final approval, it's important for us because you guys are spending with capital funds, a lot of money and, and big operational funds with bus purchases and such, and so we appreciate all the work that's put into that.
And we will be coming to the board later this year to that point. What we use as our compass on what to fix next is in 2015 and 2016, we had a number of field assessments done, which kind of is like when someone goes through, a professional goes through and kicks the tires of a school and says, this was what needs replaced first, this will need replaced second, five years, 10 years, what have you. We're going to be redoing that over the next year, year and a half, so we'll be coming to the board with a recommendation of who we'd like to hire, and we'll do another competitive request for qualifications to find someone perfect for this type of role, and then we'll use that as our, kind of our compass moving forward as we build and continue a five-year forecast for permanent improvement projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
And Mrs. May.
Yes, question passes three to zero. Thank you.
Good evening. I have a few items on the HR agenda that I'd like to highlight tonight and some exciting recommendations for your approval. First, stipends tonight, we have just a few, middle school orientation stipends for folks that are organizing middle school orientations, some kindergarten assessments that happen in the summer, reading recovery, training stipend, and then just one revision to an EL assessment stipend that was previously approved. Now to the exciting pieces that are on the agenda tonight. Dr. Marshausen mentioned, we're asking you to approve a new job description for the coordinator of digital content. That'll be a position that really bridges the gap between the academic and operations department and some important work for the district. So that's item one. And then item two and three tonight, we have three of our administrators under item two that will be moving into new roles next year with your approval. Marty Osmond will be moving from Jerome Assistant Principal to Indian Run Principal. So we're excited for Marty and this opportunity, he'll do a fantastic job. Matt Perrow, Kaufman Assistant Principal, will be taking over with your approval as the new principal of Dublin Kaufman High School. So couldn't be more excited for Matt. And then again, Dr. Marshausen mentioned, Mike Allring, outstanding leadership at Dublin Kaufman for many, many years. Excited to see him support the district as a whole here in central office in the position of Director of Principal Leadership. Item three, two new administrators to the district, and then Brian Arnold, Jerome High School Assistant Principal, will be moving into a new role this year, excuse me, moving from the teaching role at Jerome to the Jerome High School Assistant Principal role. So we're excited for Dr. Arnold. And then two new administrators to Dublin City Schools, Shannon Hunt-Stokie, coming from Rimsburg City Schools as a new curriculum coordinator in the literacy and humanities area. And then Kelly Ram will be, with your approval, the coordinator of digital content. So a lot of those folks are here tonight, we're excited that you're here, thank you for your service, and excited for new folks that'll be joining the team. Other quick recognitions tonight, under item four for retirement, Sue Kenny has served the district for 39 years, so certainly appreciate Sue and all she's done for the district over that period of time. And Deborah Woodings on the certified agenda has been with the district for 19 years and is retiring as well. So thank you, the service to our district, our community and our students. And then on the classified agenda tonight, again, a couple of things to highlight, we do have four paraprofessionals that will be moving into teaching roles. So it's always exciting to see our paraprofessionals grow and move into teaching positions. Karen Clokey- So couldn't be more excited for Matt. And then again, Dr. Marchausen mentioned, Mike Allring, outstanding leadership at Dublin Kaufman for many, many years. Excited to see him support the district as a whole here in central office in the position of Director of Principal Leadership. Item three, two new administrators to the district and then Brian Arnold, Jerome High School Assistant Principal, will be moving into a new role this year, excuse me, moving from the teaching role at Jerome to the Jerome High School Assistant Principal role. So we're excited for Dr. Arnold. And then two new administrators to Dublin City Schools, Shannon Hunt-Stokie coming from Rimsburg City Schools as a new curriculum coordinator in the literacy and humanities area. And then Kelly Ram will be with your approval, the coordinator of digital content. So a lot of those folks are here tonight. We're excited that you're here. Thank you for your service and excited for new folks that'll be joining the team. Other quick recognitions tonight, under item four for retirement, Sue Kenny has served the district for 39 years, so certainly appreciate Sue and all she's done for the district over that period of time. And Deborah Woodings on the certified agenda has been with the district for 19 years and is retiring as well. So thank you, the service to our district, our community and our students. And then on the classified agenda tonight, again, a couple things to highlight. We do have four paraprofessionals that will be moving into teaching roles. So it's always exciting to see our paraprofessionals grow and move into teaching positions. Kara Klowke, Kathleen DePalma, Paige Hesley and Judy Ready. And then retirements on the classified side, Georgianne Nosker with 33 years in the district. So we're excited for Georgianne and thankful for her service. And Thomas Taylor with eight years as bus driver for us and will be retiring as well. So I'll have in the HR agenda tonight.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, Matt Perel will be our new principal at Kaufman High School. Matt, I believe you're here, so if you could come forward. Mike as well, I think you've been up here, probably everybody knows you, but come on up this way anyway. Make them come up. Shannon, I know that you were able to join us tonight and I don't know, is Brian here? And I know that Marty will come to the next board meeting. He had a family vacation and was actually going to change it and I'm like, no, 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 we'll get you at the next one. Enjoy the family vacation. So congratulations to these folks for stepping into new leadership roles in our district. We're excited to have you here and look forward to great things as we work together in the future.
Call the roll please.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
Mr. Weiningen?
Yes.
And Mrs. May.
Yes, motion passes three to zero.
So everyone, I'm going to be brief tonight from the office of public information because we have additional students to recognize and the timing of that's just perfect. I do want to update you on a couple of things real quick. Our Facebook page remains MIA. We're working on it with them. It is up to Facebook to fix this. So all the folks who see the online gaming videos on our Facebook page, that is a hacker somewhere in California doing that work. We have let Facebook know over and over again. It's been a bit of a frustrating process, but we will not stop until we get that fixed. So just FYI, we're aware and we're working on it. The city of Dublin will have its Independence Day celebration on July 3rd. The parade will be at 11:00 AM and the district will have a presence in the parade as we always do. And then Dublin Kaufman will host fireworks that evening over at the stadium. There'll be a lineup of local bands followed by fireworks about 10 o'clock. So just an FYI there. And August 17th, we will have our all-staff meeting and our ribbon cutting at Eversole Run Middle School. So excited to open a brand-new building here in August and to have our in-person ribbon cuttings. As great as the video versions of those were last year, they don't compare to a real ribbon cutting. At this time, I want to bring back Mike Allring as we have some more student athletes to recognize this evening. Mr. Allring, Principal of Dublin Kaufman.
Thank you Doug. Appreciate it. Maybe? Mr. Perel should be up here as the principal of Kaufman High School now officially. So I'm going to start with, yeah, come on up, Mr. Perel. I'm going to start with, and Mr. Perel and I both got the pleasure of watching these girls compete. And they had a great year, some youth on their team, but they had a really solid team. They played really hard, took some big hits in the year from some powerhouse teams. So as you get into the playoffs, you're kind of projecting, all right, you know, this team got us pretty good, this team got us pretty, if we win here and here, we're going to match up at this game. And I mean, you just, you shouldn't, but you do. That's how you think, right? So Upper Arlington, we're at the Upper Arlington game, number one team in the state, number 11 in the country, they haven't lost in a few years. So I think we, and it's my fault, I was thinking potentially this could be the end of the road and I don't think any of them thought that, the parents or the kids, which is what they should do. So I'm watching the game and I'm talking to the principal at Arlington and superintendent. We're kind of walking around talking, looking at some new facilities and then we were down five to two, I think, early and it's like, gosh, all right, well, let's just keep out. Next thing you know, it's seven to seven and we knocked off the number one team in the state and one of the top teams in the country. And it was just the most unbelievable thing to watch the girls and the parents just be so excited and coaches so happy about. That was kind of like a state championship game right there, it felt like. But then now we've got two more teams. Loveland, who I don't know, had lost or maybe once, but this team was ginormous as we went down to Loveland. And if we win that game, we've got New Albany, who took it to us early in the year. But our girls just, once they got to that game, they just never had any doubt and none of us did at that point, that if we beat Arlington, we have a chance to do this. They went down to Mason and played Loveland in the worst weather that we could have asked for, but they, they were a tough, very big athletic team and somehow we pulled that game out by one or two goals. And then the state championship game, it can't, it's, does no justice for me to try to describe it to you, but playing New Albany literally the last second, they tied it up with like six seconds left and we were kind of down because they had come back a little bit and now we, okay, dang, we're going to overtime. This is not, Dr. Marchausen was there, we were watching this game. So we're going to go to overtime and somehow with six seconds, two passes later, the ball's in the net, the buzzer's going, bad principal laying in, half our students were on the field. So it was one of the most incredible athletic events I've ever been to and I could not be more proud of these girls and coaches. But I think the girls I'm so proud of, but Coach Murphy's been with us for a long time and he's built this program from the ground up and to see him take them to the top, I think was a really special moment as a principal for me, knowing him as a coach and a parent for a long time. So, and I've gotten to know the girls so well and they're just such great kids off of the field. They're the sweetest, nicest folks. So I want to congratulate our girls' state championship lacrosse team.
So we have some of our girls that are here tonight. Some of our seniors unfortunately left off of college and a few girls vacationed, but the ones that are here, first we have our favorite, Allard. Then we have one of our seniors, Amanda Bailey. You know, Hardwitz. R.G. Baydeck. We have Elliot Schnott. All right, we kind of get there. We have Kara Hendrick. We have Caitlin Gamble. Quinn Gamm. We have Lily Holmes. Kara Hendrick. Olivia Lynch. Olivia Schaefer. And we have Megan Sheer. And the girls that could not be here are Mary Proctor. Michael Parks. Clay Mosman. Kara Hendrick. Abby Elliott. Ameri Kaufman. Kenzie Beck. Kate Tyack. And Ava West. I should recognize my coaches that are here too. Steve McGuire. Christine Irvine. Emmy Violet is in the back there, I think she was hiding, there they are. And Mackenzie James. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to them. Anything? One more, sorry. There you go.
If the girls' parents would like to join their outside, that would be great. We have a rare opportunity tonight to take a picture of two state championship lacrosse teams, something that has never happened in the history of Dublin City Schools. So at this point, I would like to introduce Joe Blynn, again, AD at Dublin Jerome. We're going to need a minute here for transition as the following movement and we're out and the next group in.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks again for having us. I remember last year being so disappointed when the spring was canceled because both our boys and girls lacrosse teams were really, really talented last year and I thought, boy, this might be a year we can really make a run, both on the boys' side and the girls' side. But you know, it wasn't to be last year. So this year came in, you're not exactly sure how it's going to go, you're not exactly sure who's going to step up because you didn't have a season the year before. But just so extremely proud of our boys, just played hard all year, just a tremendous coaching staff. Coach Asmo's done a tremendous job putting a great staff together and just very excited for him and all of our families. Just it was a very special year, very special season. We had, we went down to Mason and we played Cleveland St. Ignatius, so we kind of embarrassed our, at our place earlier in the year and it was tied up. They led us the entire game. We never led until the overtime. And then in the overtime, we won about three minutes in and it was just a tremendous victory going all the way down to, or all the way up to green for that game. And then the championship game, I'll let Coach Asmo talk about that, but getting just very proud and very happy for our team.
Good evening, appreciate it. How are you?
Good.
Good. Thank you guys for honoring us today. I was going to congratulate the ladies. It's awesome that we've had both of us able to achieve the goals that we set forth. So congratulations. I think you're outside for the picture in a moment that we're going to be taking with them. As a young man, sit down, so many things I could say about them, 22 and two, the two games that we lost during the season, we had the revenge later on as well. And you know, the one thing that as I'm thinking about, you know, Dublin City Schools and as being a teacher and these guys is just the way they fought back and stayed together as a team, as we like to as a community, and just the way they continue to work on their goals and never figure it out, okay, let's like yell at each other, let's just figure it out together as a team. No matter what happens, let's stick together. And that's what they did in our two last games against St. Ignatius and against Upper Arlington. We were losing both games and they stayed together and our leadership, our eight seniors, did an amazing job of keeping the staff, the players, even the fans under control and just, hey, let's figure it out together. And that's why we're staying here because our eight seniors and the leadership from them as well as the young men that supported them. So we appreciate you honoring us tonight. It's awesome to bring the first division one, first division one at Dublin Jerome and the second with the Dublin Kaufman boys winning before that. So it's great to keep it in the community. So thank you. This time I'd like to honor our young man, Will Hackett. Jackson Burns. D.B. Jack Donahue. Gary. Jack Kessler. Andrew Laxman. Seth Martin. Bruce Blachman. Harrison Moses. Daniel Brashow. Ken Robinett. Ethan Seidel. Seth Seidel. Kev Smith. Preston Su. Chase Sigurnis. Brady White. Kyle White. Also a shout out to my two coaches here that came in, Landon Delprint and John Fazano for helping out and doing an amazing job.
Thanks for having us. Appreciate it, always a pleasure.
How are you? How are you?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Moving right along, do we have any items for board discussion? Or for future agenda items?
Congratulations.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. You all have a great evening.